All in order, first order of business, flag reading.
Let's do the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, approval of minutes? Got a motion, any questions? Got a motion, second? Got a second? Any comments? All the fairs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed,赞成, carries. Bills? I'm not right there.
I'll make the motion to approve the paying bills while the people choose.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? You got the bills and part of it in there too, huh? Kevin's not here, they have.
He's over across the hall.
Oh, yeah, he's over there.
Water, water.
He wanted to talk to the water board about that. Albert's stuff.
Candy, did you hear on that pushback on the closed construction, was that factory or anywhere to erase?
Kevin said they thought it.
Yeah.
Well, it took like. And they either pay him back.
Any questions? Roll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Laipon?
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brian Henshaw? That's already Candy.
Yeah, there's a couple of them that grant funding, but we haven't gotten a check back yet from. Of what's her. We're good.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve, there's a second? We got a second? Roll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Laipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Treasure checks.
Motion to approve.
You got a motion to approve, there's a second? Roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Laipon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
For rule again, anything to add?
I want to make a motion to add allocate to the.
Okay.
Our HR as well as a potential deal on one of our pieces of land anymore.
I'll put it under Fields. Okay, anything else to add? We got an approval?
Move to approve as amended.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Crystal?
Good morning.
Morning.
So, emergency closure policy, um, maybe basically we'll just a little bit extra in that policy so we have a little bit more control over our closures. So, I just put in them suggested changes to that policy, if you guys have a chance to review that.
Should work, should work all right?
I think so, yeah. I think they're allowing that commonly or put something there where typically or gonna follow this whole district, but with that chair. So, just so they know not to just automatically assume that the school district currently closed in our domain, so. And I feel like I can communicate that to employees to make sure to watch for them, make all notifications.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it looks straightforward.
Should be enough more than one phone call, but should all be on the same.
And I don't know if you guys wanted to approve at this meeting or if you just want to pick on that or would you?
We're all ready to prove you can see.
If you're okay, so we'll take with it.
Were we gonna allow either the commission chair or if the chair is not reachable, say the vice chair?
Do we have that in there?
That says commission chair or vice chair. We'll get final authorization for the openings and closures for us to be aware of.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I had to guess reasonable because there are times where you're trying to get a hold of somebody in camp.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
I'll second that.
We got a second, any other comments? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
That was it, just that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Roger or go Roger. Stacy, go ahead.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
The month of March was still a busy one, we had eighty veterans, we're seeing. The start of the Blue Water Navy people, I don't know if you're aware of the lawsuit that was won by the veterans in the appellate, federal appellate court, which has now opened up the gates for Blue Water Navy veterans that were off the coast of Vietnam to be awarded benefits based on exposure to Agent Orange. So, we've already started, a lot of this is already happening now, so we're forwarding those issues in for benefits. The military stand on, veteran stand on, March or May thirty first is approaching faster and we're seeing a lot more interest from larger area than the, than just the Lake Region, so that looks to be well attended. It'll be interesting, it'll be the first stand on that we ever had in the Lake Region, so. And all that amounts to is it's basically, it's like an educational fair where we'll have different agencies and groups providing all their information that's available to veterans. The VA will be here, they'll have people here, and if somebody needs to file for benefits, we'll work on that right there at that date. So, that's all I got going on right now. Any questions?
You keep it busy, huh?
Well, it's, it's busy.
That time goes fast, huh?
Oh, yeah, we're, it's going good, yep.
Questions? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Kevin's not here, okay, Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a request from Dale Skitman from Edmorton. He looked up, there's a house next to him that's falling apart, he's been maintaining the lot for the last four or five years, and he would like to purchase it. The price, the tax on it, I think is like six hundred bucks. He was, what his proposal is, is to knock the house down, fill and level the lot and take it over. Put grass on it, and he thinks six hundred dollars since he's gonna knock the house down, haul it to the dump is a bit high, but I'll leave the amount to you. He's willing to pay something, that's his request, and I didn't know the procedure for you guys. And it is yours, it has gone back around you.
Do you have it now?
That's true.
First step.
I asked Steve to look it up before the meeting, so.
What, do you know, Lucas?
I, no, I said I went over and I asked, I asked Steve to double check it up and get us the legal description of it, so. I don't know if he has that done, but.
So, once I have the exact legal description, what I was proposing is the idea, if that's amenable to the committee or not.
What's our policy again, you know, Alan, remember?
Well, at any point in time, you can come in and buy for the back taxes.
Yeah.
I mean, and what essentially could say, do we have to get the back taxes for it or can we?
There's some provision in there, have to we look at it, that allows for something less than the back taxes, but it's tiny and, and different things like that, so I have to look at it. But it's certainly something that's considered.
Is there something in there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is somebody gonna prove the property?
There's something in there that allows the county discretion on how to sell it.
The one thing, if this doesn't move through, then is that now that we know about it, the health department will issue a letter to the Ramsey County Commission to carry it down and fill and level the lot. To do that, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, and you also have to have an asbestos review if the county does it. If he doesn't.
We know all that.
Sorry.
We don't need to put that on.
No, I don't think it's unreasonable to possibly sell it to less, for less than the six hundred dollars, because we always say for the back taxes, well, if there's nothing on the lot, the six hundred dollar clear lot is a lot more valuable than a six hundred dollar lot if it's got something else. So, if he's willing to put the money in to fix it, I don't think it's necessarily unreasonable, we just gotta make sure we can and cannot.
Should we put this on for the next meeting? I know he's gonna address it then. Two weeks, we'll address it, we'll probably have a final answer, do you wanna let him know that?
I'll let him know that, and if he wants to be here, then he can, he can show up.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could probably give him a hint, it's probably gonna be pretty favorable.
Okay, thank you.
Tell him we'll make a deal.
Okay, appreciate it. The other thing I had was Lake Region District Health Unit does not have an HR person. And we've had some considerations where we could have probably used one in the past year or so, and I talked to Crystal a little bit, she's got a busy schedule, but she said she has, Ramsey County has like sixteen hours of your time. I was wondering if we paid for a couple of those hours a month, if we could get use of your HR person for Lake Region.
You want a couple of the sixteen?
Yeah, 'cause she's got other commitments past that, otherwise I would make, just make a deal with her.
You could see that work, Crystal? That would be all right?
Yeah, that's a good idea to me, and the building already works, and if you think you can fit it to your schedule, it sounds reasonable. Do we need a motion to say that?
Aye.
Well. How much, how much time do you think you'll need? Just so we know what to make the motion.
I would say like two to three hours a month most. We've gone for, since nineteen fifty without one, but it's, in the past couple of years, there's been a lot of changes in HR, and they, it's hard to keep up with them, and it's caused us some pain. So, I've already in the past asked her advice on a couple of things, I just walked down and presented that situation, she's given me some pretty good advice. So, that's kind of what I'm after, you know, be able to do that and compensate her for, or the county, I'm not sure how to work that out, but we can, that's pretty easy.
So, you wanna come up with a plan for the next meeting then? Well, that makes sense.
Sure, sure, I can sit down with the other and see how much that comes to, two to three hours a month, and have an exact figure for you, so that we could, I just have my bookkeeper issue Ramsey County that check each month, and then.
So, you would reimburse the county then?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
I think an agreement should be drawn up too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like we have.
Sure.
Do you want Carrie to help you with that, or?
Pretty simple, yeah.
Yep.
Just an M O player.
Don't just make it too difficult. Too binding or anything like that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you.
Everybody all right with that?
Appreciate that.
Then we can approve it at the next meeting, you know, formally, and everybody, got any other questions? Carrie, any?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you. Roger.
Okay, regarding the wheelchair lift for the. I'm told the Adland pairing problem, and voice is getting distorted, I'm getting the other. Anyway, I'm wanting to comment on the lake. And I had no problems with the forty eight as far as the level goes, but I got a problem with my land, that the lake really did damage to the culverts and stuff from the wave action and stuff like that. So, now, if I get in a lower water and the lake doesn't come up, I'm still gonna keep to lose this land because of the flooding back. And I talked to the Clark Sign House out there about the culvert business, and he says they just don't have much money to do, to do stuff. And the roads, you know, it's terrible down, my farm's still, it's above water now, but it's from natural, you know, evaporation that is running down. Does it, is any kind of project where we can get government money to fix up these culverts and stuff from roads?
Well, bud, we should probably talk to Kevin Fieldson, and we'll address it with him, I think we know your concerns, so we can do that, and we'll see where we're at with, we'll have to take a look at it. You know, and he can converse with whoever he needs to, and then he can get back to us on something like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
That'd be all right?
Yeah, that'll be fine, yeah. I'm, I'm okay with the level of the forty eight, you know, that's not a big problem, I'll still lose land.
Right.
But I believe in the lake too.
Yeah, okay.
And see, you know, what the lake did before, it can lower down too.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But anyway, that's, that's what my problem is, so. I'll talk to him then and see, see what we can figure out.
We'll, we'll address that with Kevin, and then we can get him to visit with you.
Oh, okay.
You know, and then we'll go from there, and he, he'll probably come out and take a look at it.
Okay.
See what he can do and who to get in contact with, you know, to do some of this, you know, it needs to be done, okay?
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you, thank you, bud. That was a little bit of a reporter, but this first name is Roger too, beside but.
Oh.
Well, that makes sense.
So, okay, go ahead, Roger.
All right.
Sorry about that. Sorry to interrupt.
Talk, yeah, no problem. Talked to Sandy Shirely of North Central Planning, that's who did mention that a little bit at the March meeting. We can apply for money to install a wheelchair lift, but that would be probably not happen until roughly January of two thousand twenty. And there's not a guarantee, but she said we'd be pretty likely that we'd get the money, and I talked to the references that they had given me. St. Joseph's Church, Church in Towner and Mont Public Schools, and they all said that the state of Alexis out of Bismarck are very good about coming to fix things when there was problems with them. So, I guess this all depends upon where, how, what do you wanna go, I mean, you know, what direction you wanna take, if you wanna wait and see if we can get grant funding from North Central Planning to put this in, or if we just want to do it ourselves and go ahead and put it in like the summer or whatever, St. Alexis can get around to it.
And who did you talk to, did you say?
Um, the Catholic church here in town.
Okay.
Uh, Church in Towner and Mont Public Schools, there were three references that they.
They do?
Yeah, and they all said, yeah, they were very good about coming to do the repairs that needed to be done, so.
How old was the one we had? Oh, yeah.
Had, I don't know, six, seven, eight years, something.
That's it?
Yeah. It was, it was troubled from the work goal.
And how much did that cost, do you remember approximately?
Well, we got it for nothing, but we, I wouldn't doubt we stuck three, four thousand dollars into it in repairs.
I think there was a, an outdated model when we got.
Yeah, it was, right, as soon as they installed it, it was outdated, so, and that one was made in Italy where the ones that already asked St. Alexis about where do these come from that they installed, they said, no, they're made here in the United States. So, getting parts shouldn't be an issue.
How long is one of these new systems supposed to last? Are you making anything out?
Guess I didn't ask that question, but.
How much use is it gonna get, do you think?
Well, I won't see a lot of use, I don't know, but like I said before, I guess, uh, still think it's the right thing to do, we can all know it is, certainly not cost effective, but.
How long have we been doing without the broken?
Um, it's probably been a couple of years since that one was, was used. But the last time we used it was when Jeff, you and I took that test run down there, and we got back, got you back up, and we said, nope, nothing to do that again.
We knocked on wood and, and said a little prayer when we got up, and, and I don't think we've used it since.
No, that's the last time.
They, and it, there is an inherent issue with, with those stairlifts, they don't get used a lot, so they, they, you know, aren't properly maintained kind of thing, and they, you know, when you don't use something, sometimes things just go bad on them. And then, you know, we don't expect to have somebody like Roger on staff to be able to repair and maintain it, so then those people have to come from Bismarck to make those repairs, and so then it becomes another problem there, and. But, you know, they're, they're only really our best option to do that is, is a stairlift like that. Otherwise, you know, you're looking at a major expense with an elevator or an outside type of structure to get an elevator into that building, and, you know, which would be certainly a more reliable system, but this is our best option for providing accessibility to that lower level.
You said the Catholic church had one over here?
Their, theirs is an elevator type.
Oh, it's an elevator, full scale elevator, okay.
Well, I mean, it's a.
Italy lifts up about five feet, but it is an elevator type.
Yeah.
And I talked to them about, the guys when they were here in February about possibly installing one like that, and they said, they're much more reliable, but it said, there's not enough room at the base down in the bottom of the stairwell, otherwise they would have.
Yeah, you have to have enough exit entrance on each side, you just don't have enough space, it's supposed to be, knock a wall out.
Not enough room down there.
But the, what did the Catholic church does work really well?
Yeah, I mean, it gets used quite a bit.
But there again, we said that's the elevator type.
Right.
And they said that, that style is a lot more reliable than the inline. And we only have room for the inline.
Thirty-nine grand, huh?
Yeah.
And did you, did you say the grant funding potentially be available, was it the first of Jan, or the round start January twenty?
It would be a process, but by the time it would be done, it probably wouldn't be installed until roughly next January.
We don't think this elevator could be installed until next January.
If we, if we're using grant funds?
If we go through North Central Planning and try to get grant funding for it, by the time everything was all done, you know, they, they would take this estimate and, and send that in, and then they would try and get more estimates if they can, and, but by the time all paperwork is done and the grant isn't available until like, it was November or December, we would find out.
Next.
And then it would be January, if you Sandy figured, at least until it would be able.
January of twenty-one, then?
The January of twenty.
So, we, yeah, we know they're not, we got the grant by about November.
Yeah.
This November.
This November.
Essentially, you're talking a couple of months.
Well.
You know, 'cause by the time we move it ahead in May, June, November, December, you know, you're just, there's just a little window there, we're kinda.
Well, like I said, all depends upon what you want, how you wanna go about this, if you wanna wait another three quarters of a year to put it in, or if you wanna just, and possibly get it paid for by North Central Planning, or where they get their funding, or who will do it quicker, that's your choice.
Do we wanna try to do that?
I think tax dollars wise, that, that kind of makes a little more sense, I mean, we've gone years without it, we can't wait two months to say forty grand, I know it's a. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that's reasonable, I mean, you're talking, you're talking six months, likely, if I'm. At the most.
Yep.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying.
I, I know, you know, it, it's an expensive piece of equipment, that's not gonna get used in, you know, where, in, in great abundance. You know, I, I find it difficult for us to host and, and schedule public meetings and events down there without it.
Right.
You know, since we are a public entity. You know, but we, we've been doing that for two years now, so.
And even when the other one was working, I think one time during Roundup, somebody used it. I know it was used a few times when Spencer was younger and you were going down there for air, a few years, but other than that, I only know of one time when during the Roundup, somebody used it.
And you know, we have Roundup that, that uses the basement, we have fishing tournament that uses the basement.
They don't use the basement anymore, they have it for years, no. Roughly Roundup is about the only thing that goes down there.
That we schedule down there?
Yeah.
Well, you might have more things that would get scheduled.
It's possible, yeah.
It's certainly that gives people that, that option, knowing that it's available.
Yeah.
Well, I, we're, we're pretty much in agreeance that we should wait, though.
Do we shoot, do we shoot in the summer? When, when do we start?
Well, we could, depending on what, what kids are down there practicing and what events they, they have upcoming kind of thing, and it's, I don't think it's gonna be used a, a whole lot, to be honest. So, I, I would be certainly fine with, with waiting.
Can I just ask one question, Roger? It's, what did Sandy, what did she say about our chances, is it a good chance we get the grant, is it fifty, is it?
She said it's a fairly good chance.
Okay, well, I mean, if she thinks it's a decent chance, then, I mean, I'm willing to wait off of the thought we're probably gonna get it, I mean, if it's like, well, it's a shot in the dark and we're waiting six months, then it's a little different, but I think it's worth waiting for, I mean, like you said, it's been two years, another six months isn't gonna.
No, and the other, the other thing that we may run into is in a, you know, a higher cost, what, you know, every time you wait to put off of a construction project, the price seems to go up. And then again, maybe if they can kick this out, however they put them on our bids, maybe they'll find something to do a little less.
Maybe.
Okay, well, we'll go that route, then, Roger, just go through North Central Planning, and maybe you wanna let the elevator company know the.
We'll do that, yeah.
It's not that we're going to go a different route, it's just, go on, they're trying to fund it that way, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kevin?
Morning. Okay, first off, our summer maintenance contracts require your motion to have the chairman and the audits sign, there's one that adds to that list, it's clean strip, so.
I'll make a motion to allow the chairman to sign, so these contracts, the list as stated plus country.
I'll second that.
Carry a motion and a second for maintenance contracts, all fairs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And also with the memorandum of agreement, the female is looking for us to have signed with the townships, there's one that adds to that list also Cooley, and that requires the chairman to sign.
I'd make the motion to allow the chairman to sign.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, all fairs say aye.
Aye.
Get through that in there, see a double sink is looking at doing a paving project on Walnut Street, right out here, where it hooks up to our Ramsey County two going east of town, and we share that. Half mile, rather than a zone of ten fifty fifty, and Mike is estimating that our costs are gonna be approximately fifteen thousand, six hundred, an estimate, 'cause they haven't gotten bids yet, it'll be done this summer. So, I guess I have that money in my budget, we just need a motion to go through with the project.
That, that half mile, that's from where the houses on the north side of the road stop all the way up to Walley then, or not Walley, up to Elsie, excuse me.
On the north side, yeah. Of course, the curb and gutter.
Stops, yeah, and then out, okay. I had a question on that, I, somebody asked me about the, are they planning on doing culvert work and stuff, putting the culverts over there, or?
Yep, Mike and I have been talking about that main ditch that goes through there, it does need a culvert under there, so they're gonna do that on the project also.
Okay.
This, this is a federal aid project for him, so it's eighty twenty, so the fed, there's eighty percent of the federal dollar to pay for it, so we'll probably never get any cheaper than I see there.
We need it done, okay. I'll make a motion to go ahead, you want to sign an agreement or just okay to spend the money, basically?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve spending the money for the project.
I'll second that.
Need a motion and a second for the project with the city? Any other questions? Any other questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Hey, go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, the bill pushed back the snow on the county roads. It was twelve thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. I guess it qualifies to use the emergency funds for that, so I was just curious if we're going to use those funds to pay for that, or...
What do you think?
I think the ones that qualifies would be a good place to use it.
Okay.
Just in your deck, although I have this question emailed up to me, whether or not it could be paid out of the emergency fund. And emergency and necessity is kind of what's required, which is a fact thing that the board looks at. So, for example, just by way of an example, if it was because they needed, they were sick of snow blowing and they hired someone, obviously not an emergency or necessity. But county road, ambulance routes, school routes, things like that, unable to do it because of lack of equipment or different things like that. If the board determined that was qualifying, then that's all that's required to set an emergency fund for emergency. Yep.
And, yeah, it was a lack of equipment, we wanted to keep the roads in condition, so we didn't have a mucky mess, so you couldn't get...
They quit?
Yeah, so.
Did they do a job, Kevin?
Yeah, they did a good job.
Did you say they did what, fifty spots or something?
Yeah, I did call them up, it's closer.
Fifty.
Thirty.
Thirty spots.
Thirty spots.
Really?
Yeah, he texted me and they got it, so.
Yeah, there was a bunch of them.
And they used a cap?
They used dozers, they had four, four dozers going one day and five on the second day, so they haven't done it in two days.
Ooh, monster.
Yeah.
That, I'm sure that's... Yeah, I'm sure that helped getting the, getting that snow off the road, though.
Oh, my gosh.
The road stays in such better shape when it can actually get down and get into the ditch instead of sitting and turns into a lake on the road.
Water can get away out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes forever, because it just keeps melting and melting and it never dries up, so.
I was going to say that we could get pretty good timing overall, too, on that last blading where they got the wings down and knocked them out. So they kind of created that little valley down in there, and the water went underneath, the roads are actually in pretty good shape right now.
Tarshine was perfect.
Yeah, it worked out.
Otherwise.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll make the motion we pay for it out of the emergency fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then our bids for projects, supplies. That's the results of the bid. Uh, what, a couple of things we need to act on before we get started. There was one bid that came as an email. And it said to, on the instructions, it said that bid for must be sealed and addressed to the Ramsey County Auditor. And it was for road oil on the second page. So we didn't get, if you don't count that one, we didn't get any bids. Now, this email did come in time, it meant the date, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't mailed. So we need to make a motion whether we accept that bid or not before.
Who was it? Was it from one of the listed companies?
Yep, it was from the bottom one, they're now Husky Engineering, Husky Energy.
Have we had this before? Have we used email before?
Uh, no.
We'll approve this and we'll have to put that on our...
Going forward, yeah.
Forward, but we're going to accept this.
Some of the other bids we do, like culverts, for instance, but this one didn't have it on the instruction sheet. Yeah, that's a good idea, we need to do that. The way, the way technology works today is...
Yeah. If there's only one bid, I guess we couldn't get too much trouble accepting it or not.
I don't think we'd have any complaints from any other companies, so.
Is it a bid all right money-wise, it's...
Yeah, it is.
I mean, we plan on allowing to go to the email in the future anyway, I don't, you know, it's not that it's going against anybody else's bid that's there, I guess I don't see a problem with that. It'd be another thing if there were three other bids for it or something.
Totally agree.
These other companies had the time to mail one in too, or email to them and send one, so. I'll make the motion that we, that we accept the email bid.
Do you have a motion to accept the email bid, or a second?
Would you be interested in amending that motion to say that, you know, in the future, we will accept?
Yeah, that'd be fine, okay. In the future, we won't be getting accepted email bids, and make that part of the spec.
Then I'll second that.
Second, you'll put it on your request and...
Next year.
Any other questions?
I'm not okay, Gary.
Well, I think it's the sign of the times. I don't know statutorily, I think there's some pretty formal requirements, whether or not they're going to be able to seal electronically. I don't know if it's a decision on that. So I can sure look into that, think about it in two weeks. I just, I don't know that our statutes certainly aren't keeping up in line with technology, that's reality.
When it's sealed and so...
When it's sealed in the electronic email equipment.
You'll see it when it comes in, huh, Kevin?
Yeah, I will, but, you know, honestly, I wouldn't share it with anybody.
No, no.
So I guess the question would be then, is...
Whether or not an electronic is submitted bid.
So by making the motion and accepting it today, and if we award it, then are we within statute or not?
That is the question.
When do we get our road oil?
We won't need it till, towards the end of May.
Okay.
Can we, can we wait to act on it until the next meeting, when we have some advice that we can do that then?
Sure.
Okay, I'll resend my motion then.
Okay.
Let's act on it in a couple of weeks.
What if we have to redo that portion of the bid?
What if we have to redo it, we said?
Yeah, re-bid.
We could just call for bids, because this isn't a hundred thousand dollar bid or whatever, so I could just call three vendors, it still would take long to do.
Okay. Let's do it that way, make sure we're all right.
It also says on the instruction sheet that the board deserves the right to reject any or all bids, so that's part of the instructions also.
So you withdraw your bids, huh?
Yeah, I'll withdraw them.
You should make sure that we, before we want to make a change how we do things, so.
Luke, is that's all right?
Yes, but it's me.
Okay.
Okay, then we have one more. Um, on the front page, the truck route base stabilization. We did get a letter out of my office that was late. I haven't opened it for truck route base stabilization, so we need a motion to either, or a motion to either accept or deny that bid. Part of the process.
And that was just the one bid, or did you have more than the one that's listed?
This is not, this one is not listed, I did not open it, so it is from NCC Express on the bottom.
Oh.
But, but it came in after the bidding process had closed?
Yep. And it came to the wrong address. Yes, so my, my opinion on this one is, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
We'd get in trouble if they don't...
Following with requirements.
Make the motion to reject it, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, the other discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, now we can do it, so. A little bid for our, both of our gravel projects, Ramsey nine A and four A, both went to Soper's, or they, Soper's is a low parent bid. And I'm okay with them, they're within budget, so I would suggest approve that bid.
We'll approve the bid for Soper construction for Ramsey County nine A and Ramsey County four A.
Okay.
Do you have a motion in the second to add a fact, is there any other question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
In the sequel, there is a truck route base stabilization, and we only had one bid there of seventy-two thousand, which was quite a bit higher than I was expecting. And since we got this second bid, my suggestion would be to reject all the bids and rebid it again. I mean, that's an option, we can do that, so. I have no idea what this number is, I'm on the guess it floor, I don't know for a fact.
Well, you think it's higher than what we expected by quite a bit?
Yeah.
There's time to rebid it and still get it done in this construction season?
I think so, yes.
Then I'd move to reject and rebid, second.
Motion second to reject that bid. On the truck route base stabilization, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So I will take care of rebidding that one. On the second page, the chip seal project, more seal coat was low. This is for chip seal on all the roads around Lakewood, and also east, ten miles east of Webster. More seal coat was low there, and they've done hard chip seals for the last ten or maybe fifteen years. So I would be happy with them as a contractor.
I'll make a motion to get more seal coat for chip seal.
There we go, there's a motion in the second for the chip seal project, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I got a quick question for you, Kevin. You said that this was for the Lakewood Road?
Yep.
Are they going to do that on the, on the terminal road, do you think?
Yep, terminal, cove road's in there, you know, we share a cost on a cove road, yep.
God, really? Question I have no answer to. Is there an acceptable number of cracks?
No.
I, I walked that road a lot, and it seems like for a brand new road, there's an awful lot of cracks in that road.
It happens.
And that's just part of the, okay. I'm just walking along and it's like, man, this one's just done last year, there's a lot of cracks in this road.
Yeah, I know, I mean, there's really no way to control that one. One thing they tried in the past is do a chip seal just before you overlay it, like, almost in a couple of months before you overlay it. It's like another layer of glue, basically, and that does help reduce some of the cracks, but nothing else to try it.
And I think we do the heavy truck traffic on that road.
Bids the free saw.
I just didn't notice yesterday that Jesus has a lot of cracks in that street.
They reflect from the old cracks is what's happening.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask that question, so if, if we were, when we do these overlays, I mean, if you were to mill them and then, and then overlay, would that help with the, with the cracks? Does it kind of sets a new base?
That helps with the shallow cracks, with the cracks that are below your milling, they still reflect them.
Okay, I was just kind of thinking about that, because I know like when the city, they mill, but it's because they got curbed out. It's supposed to, they got to be able to get back down to that current level.
Yeah. So like I say, look at, as long as you're removing the whole crack, there's a crack that's still below what you mill that still reflects up.
Okay, interesting.
Okay, everybody's questions got answered there? Nicole, that's the one we, did we just do that last year? No, you're two years ago.
Maybe two years ago.
Two years ago.
No, we're chip sealing. And both townships have agreed to pay their share for it, we had that discussion before.
They already, they know it's coming?
Yep.
Okay, we're all right on that one.
Yeah, did we get through all the motion part?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Kevin, on hot mix, you got one wrong?
Yep, hot mix overlays, we only had the one bid there, and Shad has been doing a good job for us, so. We're still under a hundred dollars.
I'd move to accept the bid. Thank you.
We have a motion in the second to accept the hot mix bids, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Road oil, that's the one that Gary's going to help us with. And the last one, the mini excavator. But the machinery was a low bid, at ninety-one thousand. We did have three bids there, so it was pretty competitive. I didn't hide the tear, if they have any comments, I don't know, I'll say anything, or...
Uh, I was just making sure that everyone had the full warranties, like if Putler did full warranty on that, you know. Just making sure it was apples to apples, because that was a huge cost.
Yep.
That was the only reason, I was just checking, I guess.
It said on their...
It just said five-year warranty, I did call you, I think, because I was very...
On their bid, it said full three-year warranty, and then plus additional two years.
Okay.
Standard is three years plus an additional two years for all.
Okay.
Hoses, bumper to bumper hoses.
Additional two years are also full warranty under both bids.
Yep.
Can they throw in two to make the bids back in the other words?
Is that, is that with the trade-in value, or...
Uh, that's our final price. I mean, if you add eighteen thousand to that ninety-one thousand, that's outright crazy.
Okay.
You know, if, if we're going to be installing a lot of these culverts ourselves, or like the central code says, this piece of machinery is going to be needed. Whatever we decide to do there, I'm just heads up there.
I'll make the motion to approve bottom of the mission, excavator bid.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, any other discussion, question?
What were you, what was it that were trading?
Nineteen eighty-eight?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Loader backhoe, so that means it's a loader, front and backhoe.
Rubber tire.
Rubber tire, is that a front wheel assist at all, or?
Are you looking for a backhoe?
No, uh, the, the fair board's always looking for a tractor to use out there to do that, to do their re-nod. But I don't think they give the backhoe option, but they're always looking for a tractor with a bucket of, you know, front wheel assist.
You don't know you need a backhoe until you need it back, and if you get it, else then that can use it for all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, you're all those trees that were planted, there you go.
There you go, but...
They need, they really need a box, like, something with a box.
They, they, they need a lot of stuff out there, but they're dollars limited.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion in the second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, that's it for the bids. Okay, now the discussion on the culverts, maybe Kerry could start out here.
Well, at least the men have agreed, Bud Stowe would bid.
Bud Stowe?
Stowe, Cam, you know.
Yeah, I don't know the name, but Roger?
Roger, okay, Roger. When I asked for Roger, I wanted Roger Gunnerson, and Roger Stowe got up. And he told us his problem out there on his township roads, so. And culverts, the water's trying to get back in the lake, but the culverts are in very good shape. So I told him, take a look at it. He didn't, he didn't hear it very well, but that's probably like a lot of us are getting mail, so. But I just thought I'd plug it in, I'll vacuay it, but, go ahead, Kerry.
The line is short of it, I think the ultimate question was whether or not Kevin's policy needed to be amended or updated or changed or whatnot. And I don't think it does. So that section twenty-four oh eight or two point one that somebody brought in, addresses established drains in reference to installing bridges, not culverts, or surface water drainage or things like that. And the counties that you have gotten responses from, Kevin has gotten responses from, they're kind of all over the place in, in their sizes and their limitations and things like that. There's an attorney general's opinion from nineteen sixty-nine that says that counties have those authorities to set some limits like that. As it relates to, we're, we're going to look at culverts of thirty-six inch diameter and forty feet long and things like that. And we learned a lot, I think, about what an established drain is, we got some good information Kevin did from the Water Board. We got some other information from state attorney's offices, what their commissions and what their policies are. And they are all over the place. Some don't provide any, some provide for twenty-four inches and higher, or, and some provide for ending what, forty or sixty inch culverts and higher.
One is ninety-six inches.
So there's different processes depending on what section of the quote that you're in. And really, if there becomes an issue outside of what he has for his guidelines, then we can certainly revisit it if we need to come up with another policy to have in place. But I think what he has is fine.
Well, that's...
The long and short of it, quick answer.
Thank you for looking at that.
Yeah, well, and Kevin's got a lot of backdrop information from the State Water Board. He also got some things from different highway departments, I think, across the state who were willing to respond and share it.
So what, what's the definition of an established drain, and I think was the kind of the main question I had, because it, you know...
Yeah, let me find my right sheet here. It's really...
Is this one here?
Uh, well, it's from the Water Board where it talks about just what is a drain and then an established drain. Uh, well, it's from the Water Board where it talks about just what is a drain and then an established drain. Um, basically is something that is already in existence. It's on some sort of a US, what is it, United States Geological Survey map. Are you, do you have the email up there?
Yep. Drain means any natural water course opened or proposed to be opened and approved for drainage and any artificial drains of nature or description constructed for that purpose, including dikes and aperture and works. This definition may include more than one water course or official channel constructed for the aforementioned purpose. When the water course or channels drain land within a practical drainage area as determined by the written petition called for in section sixty-one, twenty-one, and ten, and the survey and examination called for in section sixty-one, twenty-one, twelve.
There's legal definitions of drains and then the established drains really are the, um, something that's already placed. It's on the map.
Yeah, so that, that was kinda my question, because the.
Water course, and then there's definitions for water courses.
Cause there are definitions for everything in century code except an established drain, but then you go and go to the, then they have a standard set for how you establish a drain. So that was my question, so is an established drain, what you call it, when you go through the Water Board and go through the formal process of establishing a drain? Or is an established drain count natural waterways and stuff, but that's just a drain then?
Yep.
Okay, so.
For the most part.
So technically then what century code is saying is we're on the hook for anything that is formally established through the Water Board, and then we can set our policy accordingly for any other culvert sizing on the, on the township board then?
Right.
For the most part, yes.
For the most part. Plus you have, like you said, the opinion from nineteen sixty-nine that essentially says.
Yeah, and there's some other opinion that was referenced out of our county, but it's not an opinion that I can find anywhere, so.
It's an opinion that's not an opinion.
It's not an opinion dated and written to the same person that they referenced, so I haven't been able to find that one.
Okay.
But it's talking about this letter.
Which, which opinion do you have?
From Earl Myers to.
Yeah, it's the sixty-nine one.
Sixty-nine one.
Okay, well, there's supposedly a nineteen eighty-six one that was written.
That's this August nineteen eighty-six.
Okay, who's that written to?
So.
That's the one I haven't been able to find on them.
Mister Myers.
Oh, okay, that's why. It's something different referenced in the.
But it's basically talking about the approaches off the township roads and the culverts that would go underneath that approach. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's just a secondary opinion on who's in charge of the culverts on the approach off of the township road.
Right, that's where it'd have to be a major drain and that approach getting into the field or into the house or.
So would it be a landowner issue to have to take care of that culvert or would it be a township issue?
Just a township.
If it's in the right of way, I suppose it's the drainage basin in the right of way for township issue.
Yeah.
One of the things you said, Kerry, that they have to put a request in.
That is in reference to, um, like we have the, the need, the bridge, kind of in conjunction with a bridge that's going on, and then you have the established drain in reference to installing there with a bridge, so that's that section of the.
Not a culvert.
Well, you can look at culverts in conjunction for drainage under the bridge or accordance with the bridge, but that's separate then. The majority of things will.
Some of those giant big culverts are considered bridges.
Okay. Is there a way to find out, like, for instance, when something like that portion where they talk about petitioning for a bridge was put in the century code?
Yeah, it's in the nineteen sixty-nine attorney general opinion. It was in eighteen ninety-three.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, I bet you that's really old statu.
It is, it's.
Basically from before there were anything out in the countryside, and it was a way for people to say, hey, this is more than we can handle. Let's ask the county to take care of it.
Eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety.
So basically established runs of statehood. So it's just something that's been in there forever and it's never been changed, and it served a purpose at one point, but now it's probably not something that'll ever be used again.
Not gonna be used.
Interesting.
Kevin, most of the time these requests are coming from the Water Board to the commission?
Very few, unless they're over thirty-six inches.
Unless they're over thirty-six inches.
No, they don't, they just install them, and most of the time they're just replacing them equal sizes. Once in a great while, we'll see a eighteen come out and a twenty-four go in, but, and those should be approved through the Water Board, but it's not happening.
This is in triumpet township, right?
Right.
Are we gonna be able to get them? In form, I guess?
I guess, maybe you got a better opinion on that than me. I've told them several times what our policy is and they're responsible for it.
Well. It's on a township road.
It's on a township road. I, I think now that we've talked about it though and had the discussion, there's clarity and we, we know we're in good standing. I mean, you know, tell them, we went through the process, we looked at it. We determined that our policy is a pretty good policy, and in all honesty, I think our policy, if we're talking thirty-six and above, it sounds like we're not necessarily overly generous, but we're not stingy either. There's other counties, as you said, they only pay ninety-six and above.
Right.
So, I think our policy's pretty fair.
Castonie is the one that's ninety-six.
Yeah.
They don't pay for anything unless it's over ninety-six inches.
Yeah, so I mean, we've got actually a pretty good policy in grand scheme of things. The, the one thing I would ask is that if, if we're gonna stick with that policy that we reiterated like sent a letter or something up to the townships, cause after the township officers, we began talking to a couple of officers, and they said, we didn't even know that you were paid for thirty-six and above, so we've been just taking care of it. So there were some culverts that they had just, you know, that we probably should've taken care of, and they just didn't know, and they just paid for it. Cause we didn't install any culvert, so. I'll help them out a little bit then. So at least I'm already on the same page.
You think we're getting closer, getting everybody on the same page?
I think everybody, everybody on the same page. Pretty good there. If two people say.
Oh yeah, yeah, we always have issues on that end, so.
Yeah. So I will let them know if that's our decision. To stick with the current policy we have. I don't even think we'll take any action then.
Uh, but the policy waits.
Yeah, as long, yeah, as long as it's, uh, you know, we don't, we now know it is, so.
Yeah. We've been doing this for how many years, you think, Kevin?
Oh God, since I, before I came here, so twenty-two years anyway. And like I say, every other county, not every, but as many counties as I know of in the state are doing the same thing we are, so.
Do they have more than one spot they wanna do, or I just can't figure out why?
They've got a forty-eight inch arch culvert there that failed. There was a hole in the middle of the road, so I told them, well, we'll get the culvert, or the culvert's laying there. They just don't wanna put it in now, and that's our policy. We furnish them, they install them, do the maintenance. So it's laying there, it's ready to go, it's just that we had discrepancy on the policy.
I think part of it too is there's just, it's, it's gonna be an extraordinarily expensive install compared with the normal, because it's an old.
It is a poor concrete box culvert looking thing.
So instead of just being able to come in with a smaller backhoe to do it, it's gonna take a tractor or something to lift out all the, you know, so that increases costs. I think they just don't wanna have to pay for it if they don't have to, so.
Which is, you know.
But it's good we got both policy and make sure we got it squared away.
Yeah, I agree. I think the other counties in the state will be interested in knowing how we decided.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
You did roll a rite, Kerry?
I did, I'm all right.
You didn't pick hang up? Is getting that old culvert out.
It's a concrete culvert, but it's spalling really bad. It may fall harder. You do, it may fall ninety-five or fall by. It doesn't look like there's any rebar in it, so that's a, you know, it falls harder easier, but, yeah, they need something. And then they can either bury it outside or use it for rip wrap on the shoulders. It's not like they have to haul it away or anything, so.
They use school buildings for rip wrapping.
Yes, I've seen that happen.
I don't wanna go.
Really?
Prairie schools, rip wrapped everywhere.
Well, I saw that, rip, rip, rip building, yeah. I don't know. I didn't thought that was a culvert idea.
Okay, I did have one more thing. I should bring up the city of Del Lake, the, looking at our Asphalite machine, not sure if they wanna borrow this or use it or what, but back in two thousand and five, this commissioner's made a motion to sell that Asphalite, cause we just don't use it anymore. It's for patching the smaller, uh, shallower pod holes. Knock on wood, we don't have those shallow, small pod holes, so we haven't used it for probably fifteen years. That's why they made a motion to sell it, so. My question is if the city's interested in buying it, can we go ahead and sell it to them? They did set a price in two thousand and five at ten thousand dollars, which I don't know if it's worth that much anymore, but.
You don't think you'd get out of the city?
I don't know, I'll try, but.
I can make one more comment, but I don't.
That was a motion.
No.
I guess at the end of the day, if we're not using it, they can.
It's been sitting in the corner.
We'll get that free.
We'll try to get something for it. Oh, that reminds me, did you ever, uh, make a decision on that? I forgot the unitary about.
V plow, yeah. I told them where you're gonna keep ours.
Okay, even.
Yeah, Rallak County was looking for a used V plow for a mortarator. And we've got two, two, three of them. One we use as a spare in case it break down, tear a shoe up or whatever. And the other one, we were gonna put on our front loader for a V plow, so then we had one spare, and I just decided to keep it.
That's fine, yeah, cause it wasn't like it was a big value item. It's a, it's a big old used V plow.
Thousand fifty, a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Very well.
For that, we might as well just keep it around and have a spare.
Kevin, do you ever run into, uh, issues with, uh, summer maintenance and, uh, people that mow the ditches and the grass gets up on the?
They have it all in the fall all the time.
Um, somebody was asking after the, uh, township meeting, they, they saw a, a county maintainer that had a hay rake mounted on the front of it. That would, you know, obviously push the, the grass to one side or the other and get rid of it. So it wouldn't be causing issues for you when you're out there maintaining.
Yeah, we looked at the building somewhere over, this winter was way too busy to get anything done. You can buy them, but.
Is it something that just retrofitted, or are they, they actually, somebody out there making them?
There was somebody making them, but they're way more expensive than what you can make them yourself.
Sure. Interesting. I thought I'd bring it up. It was ousted.
We have worked into it, and in fact, we plan on doing it this last winter, but.
Okay. People, if they give back, we'll let them know that. Thank you.
Yep. I think that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And that led into, uh, new business, discussion on open records requests. Candy? Kerry?
Kerry. So ultimately, um, these records requests looks to be about five, kind of overarching categories. It's information that is theme sought. It is all public records for the most part, so they certainly have the right to, um, the information. Uh, even if it were, for example, on somebody's private cell phone, if it was text messages or things like that involving county business, it's an open record.
Alright.
So, uh, the first hour, I have called in to the attorney that submitted this request, just to clarify really what he's asking for in some respects, because he's got in any other manner kind of reference for some of the information he's looking for. Wanting to find out specifically what it is he's looking at when he references those things. Um, also to let him know that it's probably going to take a lot longer than an hour to go through everything. So for the first hour, it's free. After that, it's twenty-five bucks an hour that can be charged. We can also request payment upfront before we do that. Uh, how I'm gonna go about, or how someone's gonna go about getting this, there's gonna have to talk to Steve and see what types of email searches he can do. Um, he can set parameters on, you know, we're looking for emails referencing these things. I would imagine the planning and zoning committee has certainly has documents, records, giving notices, things like that. Any handouts or pamphlets that involve these issues. It's mostly the email searches, and then if there are private devices that were used, then focus on those committees and the commission, which is probably I'll be sending something, looking for, uh, written statement at least about if there is any of those text messages, Facebook messages in existence. Really what are the summary of them, and then we would need copies of them to provide. So.
That's gonna be difficult.
It is going to be difficult to track down, um, some of it, um, without a doubt, if it exists. And they're looking for things from January one of twenty seventeen through current time. Wanna clarify some date, the date request with, um, Mister Leverington to find out if that is only in reference to the first bullet point that's looking for that timeline or what he's really looking for. Um, so, that's where we're at with that. What types of searches can be done on the computers and emails? I'll have to talk with Steve about, but. Waiting here back room, Mister Leverington. I left him a voicemail and I haven't heard back from him yet, so.
Are we forced to have this done by Wednesday?
Well, he's got April tenth that he's requesting it by, but it is quite large and it is quite burdensome what he's looking for, so whether or not we can comply with that by April tenth, I don't know. It's really gonna depend on what Steve's able to find and what everybody's able to bring back to us.
Well, open records request in the law system, as long as we're making progress in good faith and track our best.
Right, and it's gonna be reasonable and we're moving forward, so that's what we're obligated to do. So I'll probably get with, uh, Jeff and talk about planning and zoning committee members, at least from one of seventeen to present, and see if there's been any changes other than who's on there now, so. We'll go out from there. But it's five categories. It's letters, emails, text messages, Facebook messages, um, in one category. The next is documents. They're all different kinds of documents, sample ordinances, meeting minutes, notices, any studies looked at, considered, reports, things like that. So.
What are you gonna do? Just give them your device in? And let them look through it, see what they're looking for?
Well, like for example, um, in the one, the open records opinions that I looked at, there are queries that go out to the members. Did you use your text message or your private cell phone for public business? If you did, you know, summarize it and then provide copy if you're able to. Well, obviously if somebody's phone got, you know, run over by a tractor or smashed or whatever, then it's gonna have to go off on what they recollect. Cause there's no way to recover things that we don't have in our possession, so.
Well, and my question would be, I'm thinking about like the text message thing. Is anything you said to anyone at any point in time public record on there, or is it just messages talking between people?
County business, messages talking about county business.
To anyone or to other people that are on, cause, that are on the board?
Well, he's pretty specific in his request what he's looking for. He's looking for specific items as it relates to, um, AFOs, ordinances, uh, specific businesses, three individuals. I mean, he's pretty specific on it, so. Depending on what's on there and what comes in summary wise, I'll look at that, make sure it's stuff that does fit into the open records and then send it out, so.
To, to clarify though, like if I, if I were to send Jeff a text and said, and then just said, hey Jeff, call me when we get a chance? Is that, that's not telling.
Well, no, the minutia of things like that are, hey, remember the meetings at seven or whatever, no, not things like that. It's stuff that's really getting to the core of the business.
Cause I was looking at my texts, and most of them were like, hey, Lucas, give me a call, or, or.
Sure.
Or remember there's a meeting in a while, like two, you know, it's stuff like that. There's no.
Sure. And, and the day to day minutia of, you know, hey, meeting at seven tonight is.
Yeah.
Not what we're worried about.
Yeah.
Or not worried about, but not what we're actively looking for, so.
But my, I guess, for clarity's sake, I mean, not for this situation, but for moving forward, so something on a private device that says in the purview of something like asking for information on specifically in this situation, the, the things about cables or high arms. If it was talking to somebody that's a private individual, that's not, that's not playable under open records.
Probably not.
You don't think so?
No.
Well, depends on what he's talking about.
It shouldn't be though.
Depends on what he's talking about.
No, but for instance, if I was, if I sent the text to somebody like.
Never been in a public official.
Yeah, but, but, but still, if it's, if, if it's, the only thing that's under the purview of open records is what should be happening in this room or conversations between somebody that's in this room. If you're talking to somebody in the public, that's not open records.
I think that's gonna be dependent on whether.
I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious more than anything, but just, I'm a bit, you know, interesting to see how it shakes out more than anything, I.
Well, just to take that example for, just for an example, and obviously not referencing anything that's taken place, but like if I'm on a commission and there's a vote coming up for, you know, this building or whatever, and somebody sends me, a private person sends me a message saying, hey, you don't, if you do this, blah, blah, blah. I mean, you know, I'm just taking it to an extreme example, which is obviously that is going to play into, it would be a public record and certainly one that would be good. So, I mean, it is great area on what's being said and kind of how things are being discussed, so. As it relates to folks' private devices, then I will just be sending something by email or by letter. If I can't find an email for the person, just indicating this is what we're looking for. Give me a summary of what you have, if anything, then we'll have to find copies if we're able to.
I like open records and open vehicles, but they're kind of being, you know, I mean, simply.
Well, and certain, certain things may have to be redacted too, depending on if there's some information contained within a public record that is exempted under open records laws, then there might be redaction requirements that have to belong to.
It's not even necessarily a concern, it's just a matter of, you know, like, we can't, we can basically, the five of us could never even talk when we're outside of this room because the minute you start talking to anyone, it could be sudden to an open record, an open records. You have to be really safe and make sure that you're never talking about anything other than, hey, outlook weather. So it's just, it's just a matter of trying to be as common sense as possible, right?
If the forums come and play.
Be straight with somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think they've excluded chance meetings, social gatherings.
Yeah, of course. And as long as you're doing your best not to talk about any business and it's more, you know, house basketball and less things like that, you're trying to, you know, it's a common sense approach to trying your best.
Well, I think they're after the zoning and planning. I don't think there's a question there. How far are we away from having that done? I've talked to two committee members and they said within an hour they could have it done.
Well.
When's the last time you met?
November, October.
It's been, it's been quite a while.
Did we get it done?
Yes. The problem that I think we ran into is, is that the comprehensive plan that we had KLJ update for us is, doesn't fit with the planning and zoning that we either want or currently have. And so one is supposed to be, they're supposed to tie each other together. Correct, Carrie? That your planning and zoning is based on what you've come up with as a comprehensive plan. And if that comprehensive plan and the zoning are two completely different directions, then they, they fight one another.
Well, they should complement each other. They should certainly work in accordance with each other. They should.
And so that's kinda, once we went through the comprehensive plan, then it was jumping into the planning and zoning. And that's where we had a difference in opinions with the representatives from KLJ.
Well, some, some of the board members had differences of opinion. Some of the board members had differences of opinion.
So, you know, I think in the simplistic sense, it could, you know, be done within a, an hour, but that's it wouldn't be very specific to Ramsey County. It would be a generalized plan, you know.
And that's what we want, right?
This is, this is what we're doing. We're adopting whatever the state says is okay. And, you know, and that doesn't mean just animal feeding or operations. It's everything. You know, it's from wind towers to cell towers to pipelines to.
That's what we should have, what the state says. Follow their guidelines.
And that's the easiest one, and so.
Absolutely, it is the easiest one. It's the easiest one for any future commissions to handle.
Right.
I mean, we don't wanna jump into something we don't know how to handle. And we don't have expertise within our own county. When can we set up a meeting?
We can set up.
The two people I talked to, they both said they would meet basically anytime their schedule's allowed.
Okay.
And they think they can do it, like I said, in an hour.
Okay. Well, it would be great to have that, them maybe take the lead on.
You're the chairman of it.
I know, I'm the chairman of it. What I am saying is I don't have the time to commit to it. If somebody has the time to commit to it, and that's part of one of the reasons why we hired a consultant to help us with it. Is, one, we don't have the expertise to properly, properly lay out it. And two, I don't know if anybody has the time to properly put into it what needs to be put into it. So.
Do you have anybody that has time to do this?
Well.
KLJ don't have time to do that after what we've paid them?
I would think they would.
You would think they would?
If we can agree with what they've come up with.
No, it shouldn't be what they come up with. It should be what our members of the planning and zoning come up with, as long as they're within state guidelines.
Exactly.
That's what I want this planning and zoning to do, is state guidelines. I understood that's what we were gonna stay in. And I'm not stepping out of the box to go down our own road again. That's not gonna happen in Ramsey County.
Well, and I think what you're doing there is you're confusing KFOs and animal feed operations with, with everything else. Because we have a lot stricter ideas of, of wind energy than what the state has. There's people that do not wanna see a wind turbine within Ramsey County.
There is one.
I know. But they don't wanna see anymore. But there again, how do you proclue?
Is that the majority of the people in Ramsey County wanna see that? I don't believe so. Pierce County, they're very happy with their wind towers.
I know they are. And, but you, you set those guidelines out as the state has and, you know, they can become much more lenient than what the county.
As I said earlier, we do not have expertise in our own county.
I know, yeah.
We're not in a county situation where we can afford to hire that expertise to enforce these guidelines. If we don't use the state guidelines, how are we gonna enforce them? We leave it up to the state to enforce them. And that's the best route Ramsey County can do. We've learned a very good lesson by what we did up at the KFO up at Edmore.
Well, and, and that's why we've left that alone. We've left that.
Absolutely, leave that alone.
You know, and.
Like wind towers, we should leave alone also. There's numerous places in Ramsey County, a wind tower would be fine.
I think the companies would disagree because of the, the wind velocity that we have.
It's up to the companies, not up to us.
And that's what's come back in our, in our planning and our comprehensive plan, is that Ramsey County doesn't have that shelf like Pierce does with, with those hills and, and different things like that, where that wind comes, comes down through the valley like that and creates a, a constant wind velocity of, of maintaining that jet power generation. And so that's why we haven't seen a lot of requests for, for those type of things.
I honestly believe by leaving this zone and planning open ended the way it is right now, that's bringing heat upon the county. And we've felt it from the state, and now we're feeling it from the other side with lawyers asking for open records requests. I really think we need to finish this zoning and planning, so it's on paper, it's what we're doing. And we have a grounds to move forward.
All right.
I, I just feel that. And I think the sooner we get this done, the less requests we're gonna have from the state and also the other side. And let the state make the decision, not the county. The last time the county tried to make this decision, they went to the Supreme Court, DeCots County held a lot of money. When I got on the commission, we were still paying the bill.
Yeah.
So, we need to finish this. And I wanna finish it this month.
Okay.
And if there's need be, the commission will step in and help finish it.
Well, that'd be great.
But we need to get this done and move forward. So the state knows where we're at. They're not pushing the buck onto us to make this decision because everybody knows what decision needs to be made.
Well, they, they have asked and we have submitted that answer to the state, that where our position was.
Yeah, but we don't have it in black and white and signed by the county commission. We take, they're taking an assumption from the zoning and planning board.
No, they, they asked for our opinion.
Right. But the zoning and planning is still open ended. We need to finish this.
Well, we're still operating under the ones we currently have.
Yeah, which we were told by the Supreme Court to update many years ago, and that hasn't been done yet. We need to finish this.
All right. I'm disagreeing as to get done, which is a matter of, yeah, which needs to finish.
So, need any help from anybody on the commission? Just call or let us know.
Yep, that'd be great. I'll do that.
Okay. Hello, sir?
What's your word? Oh, we'd just like to convey our opinion on the public comment for the lake elevation and the pumps running this summer. We think that it's necessary to keep the pumps moving and keep them, keep the water pump down as much as we can with the pumps. Far as economically in the county, it's, it's a major lifeline for us to get this lake back down in its borders and keep the flooding, farmland flooding to a minimum if we can. There's a lot of economic impact that would benefit Ramsey County if that land was viable again. That's what we feel from our board.
That's great that you have, you know, an opinion. I think we need to have it in writing.
We have a letter, we have a letter that we're ready to give to the advisory committee to send with.
Do you have other water boards that would support that issue in the local area? Jeff?
Well, I think the devil's like Mason.
They would.
Yeah.
Should we just do the basin, Jeff, or should we try to do like Cadillac and Tom or Tommy to tie in with us, or should we feel up to that?
Well, I, I, I think as many as possible, you know, would be beneficial. I think we're gonna see our fair share of opposition to those pumps being turned on. Unless all of a sudden we got a bunch of implore to the lake. But I do think we'll get more pushback from not so much our area, well, we, we could. But I think Manitoba's gonna have a big say in the discussion on the water quality that we've been sending them and the exceedance of the sulfur, sulfate levels in, across the border.
Was it high laster?
Several times.
Several times.
According to them.
According to Manitoba?
Right.
But what about our own analysis?
You know, we, we check it all the time and have several gauging stations along the Cheyenne River as well as the Red. And there's differencing of opinions there. But they, they seem to carry a big stick. You know, they, they hang that nineteen oh nine Water Treaties Act. And, and I think Canada pushes that, that treaty, that agreement. And it has more meaning to them than, than maybe we do down here, but they like to claim all their water problems are based on problems that they get from the United States. But, you know, the problem with that forty-nine parallel as our, as our boundary, it doesn't follow water basin lines. So you have water in both directions and it causes problems and headaches for both sides. But I think, I think we'll get a pushback from Manitoba, whether or not the, the state, you know, agrees with their findings or not. But I, I think, you know, years back, Ramsey County made a, a decision to go with the forty-six elevation. I think the city of Douglas Lake had that similar vote and voted on the forty-six elevation. You know, and at one time we brought everybody in as a joint board. And I think at that time we made a concession with Nelson County to stay at forty-seven.
Cuz they wanted to keep the water.
They wanted water flowing into Stump Lake. Now.
And we all know that there's a lot of farmland below forty-six that is still impacted.
There is, but we won't have an opportunity to go below that.
Mother nature, yeah, mother nature will have to do that.
And that's all we're talking here, is, is operation of the state outlets.
Yep, yep.
So.
What's the base elevation on the, let's again, forty-six?
Forty-six on the, on the east, forty-five on the west. So it's, it, it differs based on the intakes. And to go through an intake process to lower that would be quite, quite extensive and I don't think that, that the water commission is willing to go down that or petition for that kind of thing.
Our infrastructure will be much more usable too at forty-six. Won't it be more secure?
Well, it certainly would, you know, it would, you know, lessen the burden on a lot of township, county roads, state highways, things like that. You know, a lot of the, the state and federal highways have all been built up, so, you know, they, they don't have a big of a concern as a county, county and township road certainly would benefit from a, a lower lake elevation and get some of that back. I think there's probably, well, between the forty-eight, you know, where, where we're at now and, and the forty-six, you know, you can probably figure twenty-five, thirty thousand acres at the, at the outside. Whether or not that would all be productive and profitable kind of thing, you know, most of it probably would. But you're always gonna have that, that fluctuation every year that you're not gonna farm right down to forty-six and without losing some to either a, a big summer rain or a spring runoff.
One thing the board and I, we discussed is that the more land we get back between forty-eight, forty-six, it's, it's gonna shrink the fishery some maybe for some of the sportsmen. But the other sportsmen that come to North Dakota are gonna benefit it too by having shallower, more wetlands. The waterfall will be more productive. The deer habitat will come back more. The upland game will be better. So, I mean, just because the lake region anglers and other people that just want it for a fishery, the sportsmen have to, as a whole, have to understand that there's more benefits for coming down too, I think.
Well, you know, and, and game and fish, you know, they don't have an official position, but they've always provided access to the lake where, where possible. You know, as, as we went up, you know, there was a lot of changes that had to be made to boat ramps, and I'm sure there will be as we go down. You know, but, but they, I think, are committed to that maintaining that access point. And some of the, the private entities that are gonna struggle with that, that provide boat access to their clientele. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, those, those pumps were built and, and should be operated to their extent that they can, I think. Would certainly be with townships, counties, all else, interested parties, you know. And I do have a series of dates. We'll put out on a dual survey. Wednesday, the May eighth, Thursday, the ninth, Friday, the tenth, Tuesday, the fourteenth or fifteenth, or Wednesday, the fifteenth. Wednesday, the fifteenth doesn't have a whole lot of support. Thursday, the ninth, so far has the most respondents that would be okay with, with going on that date. And it's scheduled for one P M. in Carrington. Date yet to be decided, so.
It will be in Carrington.
It will be in Carrington. It will start at one o'clock. More than likely, it will be at the Chieftain.
You said possibly Ferkum would come?
Possibly, you know, I know he's, he, he has discussed that, on the possibility of attending. You kinda almost never know until you get there, one of those kind of things. But usually he, he's pretty good at letting know what his schedule is. But it would, it would certainly probably change the dynamics of the, of the meeting and, and how. of the meeting and and how it's run and who can speak and and who could provide comment and different things like that. Because it seems like whoever's running the meeting runs it a little differently than the person before them did.
Well, I'd just like to add that I I see the county commission is looking for opinions and and stuff from the general public to come in and tell about the tenth or whatever. I I guess I'd just like to say that obviously the people in town here and close to the water that are doing making their living off it have a lot better, a lot different outlook than the rural people that lost all their land and and all the things. And and obviously you got more voices here in town than we have in the country. And so for, you know, every ten comments you get in town, you know, we got one out in the country here. It's it's skewed. It's it's really skewed. And I I I think sometimes as you guys are getting some of these comments, I think you have to, you know, put the politics aside sometimes and look at the economic big picture of the farmland. And although it's ten to one maybe, one way or the other, in a in a voice type situation that there's still a picture out here that some of this land's been underwater for twenty, twenty-five years. And, you know, it's it's the farmers that built this community and this county. And it's the farmers that's gonna sustain it in the future. And we were all told as we were getting grounded out out there that it's a mother nature deal. You gotta just go along with the flow. So when we go down the other way here, once we get after forty six, that is gonna be true going the other way too. A two foot buffer here can mean a lot to the farmers and maybe not quite so much to the people here in town. But it's it's critical. That two foot is critical.
Well, we all need to live together.
Absolutely.
You know, we gotta get along. You gotta come up with some type of a solution to this problem. I'm sure it's gonna be.
Ever changing?
Well, probably every year, I suppose. It's a tough call, you know. I know individuals have lost their entire place, never got nothing for it. A lot of them are dead and gone. I mean, sad, sad, sad deal. You drive up through the country and, you know, I've heard those conversations of people that are still living in the basement of this courthouse at meetings. And they had everybody's attention, everybody's, everybody that was there, they had their attention. But what's the answer? You know, first thing to say, I suppose, is write a check. But I don't believe that's ever gonna happen. We need to come up with an answer, you're right, you know, where we're gonna support. I guess the pumps you put in there to be used will have to take that into consideration also, you know. There's lots of gray areas, right, Dwayne?
Yep.
Where you where you stop, you know.
I guess the big thing is even from the water board or anybody standing or even you you guys, if the pumps are utilized to to the point that they can't be utilized anymore, the monkeys off your back. Then it does become true mother nature because we have no other artificial way to get rid of the water. And so whoever, you know, everything's been done. And that quote, quote, supposedly could be done. I mean, at that point, it's not easy either, but.
Any other things from the water board?
Yeah, there was one thing that Kevin discussed with us about maybe changing the century code that we would have to, we would be more responsible for culverts moving forward in twenty twenty?
We did have that discussion this morning. We're just gonna leave our policy the way it has been in the past.
Thank you. So. Thank you. That was our, that's what we wanted to.
It was interpreted that that section is talking about bridges.
Okay.
Under, you know, the larger waterways, however you wanna say it.
Yeah, we all had the consensus set their status quo. We like the way it is now, so we'd like to keep it.
Carrie thought we were all right doing that.
Good.
Well, I I still think that you guys should should have your responsibility of being notified.
Yes.
I mean, you know, and I think you should make that clear to to not only the county, but the townships as well. That, you know, under section twenty four oh six thirty four, notice to water resource districts whenever a county township plans to construct reconstructed bridge, install or modify a culvert or construct a reconstructed drain connected with a roadway railway, the county or township shall provide notice in any way to the water board.
On a, on that note, do we need to send a letter to the township supervisors then? To tell them that we would like notification when they do something or do they send?
Well, they they haven't been doing it now, so I guess.
They haven't, they haven't been.
No. You guys don't get notified of a culvert?
No, we don't.
And and they're obligated to notify you, not not that you want to.
You know, I I think it just it it makes good sense to keep track of that information.
So how do we do that? I mean, how do we do that without really getting our thumb on their head? I mean, we can send them a letter and say you guys are you're obligated to notify the township. But how do we go and police it if they're not?
Well, you don't. I mean, but but at least they have a little notification that it's it's supposed to be done.
I I don't think it's necessarily a policing thing as it's a it's a selling point to say if we know. I I think the first part point is, you know, like when we when the townships have their meetings in the spring, if if you sent out a letter and said, hey, can you, is there any way you guys can tell us exactly where all the culverts are in the township? Just mark them on the map. That way we've at least got an idea. And then whenever there's a change, then we know we can say, okay, it's a new one. Because part of the culvert inventory is if we know that we've got much outdated culverts out there that are gonna need to be replaced, we at least know how much money we're looking at in the future.
To budget.
To budget to look forward to for culverts. And we could use it as a selling point saying, hey, the townships need more money. Because we've got a lot of old stock out there.
Some townships will be more progressive than ours.
Yeah, and and you could, like you said, you can't necessarily police it. But the more information we have to know how much money we're gonna have to throw over the next fifteen, ten, twenty years, the better off we are in saying, hey, we we've got a case for, hey, we need this the extra dollars that the state's gonna provide to help the townships or at least we know what we're up against.
So should the county commission and the water board send out a joint letter to the township officers?
Yeah, I think that'd be reasonable, good idea.
Would that, would you guys like to draft that and we sign on or should we draft it and you sign?
Okay, well, they will let these two gals do it.
Put on these guys. Well, I think.
That all right, Carrie?
Feel free to draft it.
I think between, I think Kevin can put something together. Do that just says, hey, I mean, I, because I mean, I I guess I don't know where we're at on culvert inventory and knowing where everything is. But, you know, we all know that when when things got hot during, you know, having to get watered crack stuff was put in all over the place, we don't even know about that.
We we used to have a pretty good handle on it through that road and bridge inventory. The Bureau of Reclamation did, you know, they had every bridge or culvert documented on all our major streams, our our major waterways. And they're they're really still pretty handy reference, you know, because they have the the GPS coordinates. They have pictures of it. They have, you know, pictures from both upstream and downstream. You know, it's unfortunate that those weren't maintained and and kept up. But we have them throughout the Devil's Lake Basin. But none of the counties kept them up even though, you know, they were asked to do so. But that was a a good reference material that we had. I think North Dakota LTAP does a few things with culvert inventory and and townships and.
Arms are all.
Yeah, and so there there's started to be some better ways and and more electronically monitored or inventory done. And this was an old, old book that, you know, he paged through and oh, yeah, here we go. And, you know, I got on a, I put on a map kind of thing with a different color to pen. But I think there's some some good and exciting things coming down the way with the electronic culvert culvert and bridge inventory, both on roads and bridges and railroads and everything else that goes along with it, so. But if we don't know, well, we can't keep that inventory much updated.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move into the proof payment for senior citizens and partners. Everything looks all right, Candy?
Yes.
Like a motion of proof payment.
Second. Motion is second. Why seriously, I?
I.
Full as much as Carrie. On behalf of the senior citizens, I thank you. Okay, visitors and delegations, nobody?
Have you?
Yeah, I have one more.
One more?
Well, one invoice that came in lately was for North Dakota DOT to pay for our share of the paving out Lakewood and those roads out there was seven thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. So there's probably just a little bit left to pay after that. We should be just about to the end of paying for that project.
I'll make a motion we pay that.
Anybody with a motion in second? Any other discussion? An ass. What'd you say, Lakewood?
Yep, paving out there, we did last, Lester's project.
Roll call.
Brooke?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Lakewood?
Hi.
Ralph?
Hi. That's it, Carrie.
Yep.
That's it. No visitors and delegations. Much love.
Portolino. Mark?
L A C. I was over there the other day. They made some comments that they actually have some pieces of equipment hanging on the wall, much as wires sticking out of the wall now. They're really happy with their progress and they're moving along. The count is staying up there in the upper seventies, low eighties, so the count is up. And I think everything's moving along pretty good over there. And then I was approached by the, somebody from the museum next door here. They would like to encourage commissioners to come over and explore the museum. They have a fundraiser coming up. They're gonna have a building across the street here, a brunch lunch thing. I'll get you a date for that coming up. But I'd like you all to stop by. That's all I got.
Okay, Jeff?
I've got, you know, Carrie's busy. She's here up an extension, I think. Sarah's gonna be moving into full time as, you know, that part time family deal that she was partially funded on was, she's going all in the extension now, so. We'll have fully staffed with, you know, they hired another person up there, I'm not sure. But it's fully staffed and as of now, I don't think they have room for another person up there.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Lucas?
Well, everything in the treasurer's office sounded like it's moving along as per usual. You know how she is, at least just hits things up. And then talking to the recorder, I guess, and I think you guys might already be aware of this, that we're gonna be losing the deputy recorder. She's gonna be moving to Texas. And then, as as everyone's aware, the library director took a job in Washington State. We've gotten a healthy number of applicants. So at our next board meeting for the library board, we'll put together a docket of who we intend to give interviews to. And those interviews will probably take place the following week. So that's good. Heritage Center's having its annual gala on the thirteenth of April. So if anyone can attend that, that'd be great. I think that might be it.
Okay.
Connie, Allison, Bernie, we didn't meet last month because of weather. For Devil's Lake, I should have priced it at the last meeting, but you're all invited to. The annual meeting is tomorrow at noon, no, Wednesday's tomorrow. Tomorrow at noon at the college. If you'd like to go to shoot, grab an email, and I'm sure they'll make sure there's something there for you. Should be about an hour, just a kind of a update what's going on with the.
I think it's certainly at eleven thirty.
Eleven, yes, eleven, eleven thirty start. Meal's gonna be about eleven fifty at the descent, yeah, and it's gonna be done by one. Yeah, so that's going on. Somebody else is gonna tell you, I can't remember who it is. Oh, if anybody's interested, the soils committee is meeting right now. I believe downstairs in one of the meeting rooms. I'm gonna stop down there real quick when we're done. That's it, so they're gonna try to get all that knocked out. And social services, we have been met since last time. And if anybody wants to eat steak this weekend, the curling club's having their mango bunch meal, so. Grab a steak on Saturday and go watch the curling. That's all.
Good. Okay, you covered social service and you covered law enforcement center. And like I said, the senior males thank you for the funding. Thank you. We're done.
We're done.